Pleasure to introduce the candidates for Sacramento City Council District Three. To my far right, Efren Gutierrez, Dean Dana, Cyril Shaw, Rosalyn Van Buren, Adam Sartain, Jeff Harris, and Ellen Cochran. Thank you for joining us in today's forum. And sitting on our media panel of questionnaires are Heather Skinkle from the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County, and Nick Miller from Sacramento News and Review. Welcome, and thank you both for spending your Saturday with us today. And now we are ready to begin. The candidates have chosen from straws on the order of opening statements. We will start with Efren Gutierrez.
Buenos dias. Good morning. Thank you once again for allowing us to come and share our ideas and our visions for District Three. I think you'll find us to be candidates with different opinions, and I think that's what democracy is about. It is time for a change, and it's time for District Three to have a new representative. So, I hope to be that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Dana.
Yeah, my thanks to the League of Women Voters for putting this forum on today. Our city is facing some of the most serious issues in our history: excessive city spending, pension and bond debt, residents in need, a weak business environment, and crime has seriously hurt our city. Working with you over the next four years, we will effectively take on these problems and build a better city. I will be your leader in District Three, and listen to your input, engage needed departments and resources, advocate for your issues, deliver results, and provide strong support to our residents and neighborhoods. With your support, I will be the District Three Council member you can count on to get important things done. Thank you.
Thank you. Cyril Shaw.
Thank you. I'm Cyril Shaw, and running for City Council in District Three. And I'd like to start by, being it's the day before Mother's Day, wishing my wife Stephanie and my own mother, Daxia, happy Mother's Day. And speaking of my mother, my parents are from India. I'm the son of immigrants. I grew up here in Sacramento, went to public schools, and I came back to Sacramento right after college to start my career. My children, Juliette and Palmer, I'm not sure if you can see this, but they're six and four, and I want them to grow up in a healthy, livable city. And I would like for them to, whenever they're done studying what they choose to study or decide what they want to do, I would like for them to be able to return to Sacramento just like I was. I'd like them to want to be here, but also be able to start their careers here like I was able to. So that's one of the overriding reasons why I'm running for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And to my left, Rosalyn Van Buren.
Good morning, and thank you, Women League of Voters, for hosting this forum for us. My name is Rosalyn Van Buren, and I'm running for City Council here in District Three. And my job as a City Council member is going to be to remove the boundaries that don't allow us to be successful socially and economically. I'm running in a district that I was born and raised, and where I was educated, and where I've returned to raise my children. And what I've learned during this campaign and speaking with voters is that we have a lot of organizations that really care about Sacramento's future. And we have a lot of issues that need to be addressed. But what I've learned is that we are a city that cares, and I have a great hope with the people that I've met and the work that I've done my lifelong in service will bring us better days, and that together we'll be able to solve a lot of these issues. So I thank you for your time and opportunity, and I look forward for you getting to know me better. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Sartain.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having me. My name's Adam Sartain. Let me begin by telling you a bit about what I do for a living. I am listed as a housing analyst, which means I go in, I inspect low-income housing throughout the state of California. I go in, I look for problems, and I offer suggestions for solutions to those problems, and I make sure those problems get fixed. And that's what I want to do for District Three. I want to make sure that our city starts recovering now, because our city, Sacramento, has not recovered from the economic downturn of the past decade, as well as other cities of our type. And I want to see that Sacramento recovers through our small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Harris.
Good morning, and my thanks to the League of Women Voters as well. So for years, I've been engaged with my neighborhood and the larger community in civic improvements and solving issues in the local areas and the larger city as well. And I enjoy this work, and at this time in my life, I feel a call to serve. As a neighborhood leader, I've created and participated in programs that have made our community stronger. I've started adopt-a-part groups and neighborhood watch groups that have shown me the value of empowering people to make their own neighborhoods better. As leader in the McKinley Rebuild Project, I've found that by bringing people together, you can build an incredible playground. And as chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission, I have learned to work with budgets and policy issues ranging from settling disputes over our urban forest management to writing a tax measure for the restoration of parks and public safety. It's these years of hands-on volunteerism that have made me able to take on this job as City Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ellen Cochran.
My name is Ellen Cochran, and I am a lifelong resident of District Three, and I've been educated in every public school in District Three for myself. That'd be David Lubin, Sutter Middle School, Sacramento High School. I am a teacher. I've been a teacher for 17 years. I'm not a professional politician, and I don't look at this as a skipping stone to further a political career. I'm all about the neighborhoods and the people of the district. I have worked with East Sacramento Preservation. The most recent struggle that we had was to represent the residents in a building development that was coming into East Sacramento and trying to make sure that the developer took the concerns of the community into account when the development was in the approval process. I want to be a representative, a council member who can help put an end to cynicism. I think that we have a wonderful city, we have fantastic youth, and the council member has a responsibility to serve that community.
Thank you so much. Now we move to the question-and-answer portion of today's forum. Heather, will you please ask the first question first to Efren Gutierrez?
If elected, what would be your number-one priority?
I grew from an area in the district that lacks jobs. We have too many youth vandalizing our businesses, our community, our residences, because they have no place to go. You know, we have a budget, but we don't seem to have enough money to have after-school programs or Friday-night programs or any type of programs. So I would definitely work on that. Specifically, on my 10-point plan, one of my points is to revitalize Northgate Boulevard, and that would be one of my top priorities, would be to get in there and make us look like Sacramento.
Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, my first priority, and I've articulated it pretty clearly in my literature and materials I'm sending out to the voters, is to avoid the fiscal crisis we're facing in Sacramento. The more I've learned and the more I've heard our city manager talk about real facts and real numbers the last few weeks, I've become convinced that this was the right issue to be focused on. We have pension and bond debt that is not being addressed, not being paid back. We have a half-billion dollars in debt facing our city right now, and nope, there is no money being put aside in a rainy-day fund, or whatever you want to call it, to deal with that issue. If we do not start to address our debt and our excessive spending, we spend, it seems like every week we have a new project coming up in Sacramento with a $20 million or $30 million price tag. We can't continue to do it. We have to get our house in order and focus on the essential services that we need to provide the residents of Sacramento.
Thank you. Cyril?
Thank you, Heather, for the question. And as I've been saying for months, the last several months, as I've knocked on doors throughout District Three, is that my first priority is going to be to revitalize the economy and create jobs. And now, any candidate can say that, but I actually have a plan in three key areas where we have the opportunity to do that, and where the city and my office could play a pivotal role. It involves taking advantage of assets that already exist here in Sacramento and leveraging those into both private and public-sector jobs. I think that's the only sustainable way to increase revenue for our city, to help pay for public safety, parks, and libraries.
Thank you. Rosalyn?
Thank you. There are a few issues that I'll definitely be addressing that are at the top of my list, and they are topics that go hand-in-hand. First, it's the homeless issue that we have here in District Three and our economic growth. We have the largest population of homeless in our district, and a lot of it is because of the resources that are provided or essentially located within our district. I have volunteers, Sac State students, that are working on my campaign, who've come from larger cities like LA and Chicago and San Francisco, who've commented that they feel our homeless issue is much larger from the cities that they have come from. I have a volunteer working on my campaign from Sacramento State as well, who graduated from Natomas High School with a 3.6 GPA and was homeless. She didn't get involved in drugs, she didn't get involved in gangs, she didn't get involved in crime or get pregnant. She knew her way out was through education. And what does it say about us fundamentally if, when she graduates from college, she can't find employment? So in order for us to have economic growth, we need to make sure that we address these homeless issues, and we have wonderful nonprofits who have worked tirelessly for this effort. So my first goal will be to work with them and give them support and help us resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Adam?
Thank you, and thank you for that question. As through many of my materials, and you'll find if you go on my website, adamssartain.org, I've posted a lot of the answers to several questions, questionnaires that I've received. And to answer this one, my number-one priority, if elected, would be to make Sacramento known as a small-business-friendly city. We're already calling ourselves the farm-to-fork capital, and I think being a small-business-friendly city would go hand-in-hand with that. And that means making sure that small businesses not only have the tools to survive, but to thrive and to make it easy for those who want to start up a small business, budding entrepreneurs to make it easier for them to start up one. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
So in a municipality like Sacramento, I feel the first priority is to provide basic quality-of-life amenities for the residents. That means public safety, access to parks, libraries, roads that function public transit. To do that, we have to put our fiscal house in order, and in that regard, I agree with two of my colleagues. We need to look at our budget and prioritize properly. We also need to grow our revenues, and that's, to do that, to create new jobs is going to require growth. It has to be smart, green infill growth, hopefully transit-oriented, where people live close to their jobs so we can create a more pedestrian lifestyle in Sacramento. When you put this all together, it's a complex puzzle, but we can manage our budget more wisely than we have in the past to create more opportunity for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ellen?
Every single one of the candidates here at the forum today has a checklist of items that they want to get done, and all of them are good items. This is a specific question, and the question is, what is my number-one priority? I am proposing, if I'm elected councilwoman, that I will put forward a Clean Vote Act. This would provide that the councilperson could not vote on a subject or a project that comes before them if a major donor is the proponent of the project. I think this is an excellent idea. I want to make politics very clean and very open. The Bee has written about a culture of corruption, and we can see the recent events that have been going on in our state assembly have been tragic, in my view. Recently this morning in the newspaper, the Sacramento Bee, it was noted that there's no clear disclosure for the $100,000 discretionary fund for council members. This is a simple thing to put up on a website. You have to show how you spend the money and where it goes. It's only fair to the people.
Thank you. We move to the next question. Nick, if you will, please ask the question first to Dean Dana.
Sure. I want to address a couple hot-button issues, I think, with my next two questions. First, we're going to go to McKinley Village. For the viewers who are not familiar with the plan, that's the proposal to build 336 new homes adjacent to East Sacramento. How would you have voted recently if you were actually sitting on council? And that includes the motion to build the tunnel as a Capitol Works proposal. How would you have voted and why? And also, feel free to elaborate on how your approach would have been engaging residents. And Dean?
Yeah, thanks, Nick. It's a good question, very pertinent to East Sacramento residents. I mean, honestly, the development project itself was evenly split in the community. We, I was the Neighborhood Association president, so we took a position with our association that was to oppose the project. I would have voted that way also, unless, as a condition or a condition of approval, the Alhambra Bike, Pedestrian, and Vehicle Tunnel, with emphasis on the vehicular, would be approved to ease the traffic concerns that we felt were clearly identifiable in the EIR. As a candidate, I went even further, though, and just that I opposed the project eventually, because I'd been in discussions with the developer for many, many months on this project, and determined that we just, he was bailing out of his promise to provide that bike pit tunnel. Now we have it as an obligation that the city has to follow up on. That is not the proper way to do development in our city, and the project will be a challenge in the years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Cyril?
Thank you, and thanks for the question, Nick. And I really appreciate the second part of that question. So I'm going to start with that. Is, you know, if I was on the council during this last period, I would have done more of what I was doing, quite frankly, and that is meeting with neighbors, addressing their concerns, listening to their concerns, meeting with the applicant who's proposing to build these homes, and meeting with the current council member. There was a constructive period there for a while where it seemed as if we were making progress. That period came to an end. So to answer the first part of your question, back in 2008, when I was president of the East Sacramento Improvement Association, same site, same applicant, similar proposal, I said then that traffic is my number-one concern, the traffic impact on the existing neighborhood. And this time again, that was my number-one concern. So without vehicular access at Alhambra being a condition of approval, I would have voted no. Thanks.
Thank you. Rosalyn?
Thank you. I will work tirelessly and hard to make sure that any decision that the current city council has made on any project will be resolved with any issues that we have. In regards to the McKinley Village, I would have voted yes, and I am supportive of the project. And I was the only city council, or the city council candidate that actually spoke in favor of this project, and there's a few reasons. One, it's within the SA-COG requirements, and where the city of Sacramento is looking at developing infill growth. In reality, we're actually trying to reduce the amounts of commute. I know that traffic is an issue for a lot of us and a concern, but the city's moving towards making different types of transportation accessible. We're looking at bringing in bike paths and bike-share programs and extending our light rail and also extending our bus services. I like the fact that $2 million is going to be going to our local schools. I like the fact that it's going to be producing income and revenue for our cities to be able to provide for our services. I think that Mr. Angelitas did a good job with the project and listening with the neighbors of the community. There was over 30 meetings held, and it's originally zoned for commercial, and I would not want to see a project like that there built, and I'd rather see a regular project like this.
Thank you very much. Adam?
Thank you, and thank you for the question. When I first heard about this question back in January, I did research on it. I looked at both sides of the issue, and had I been in Steve Cohen's seat on that night to vote on it, I would have voted no, as he did, to, because I would have gone with the residents who said they want the vehicular access at Alhambra as a condition of approval, which wasn't in that vote. How I would have addressed it, if I was in there earlier on, I would have made sure that it did not get, I would have made sure that it did not get to the point that it got to. Sandwiching a bunch of residences between a railroad and a freeway is not a good plan in my idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, Nick, I live in River Park. I've been there for 25 years, and in those years, I've seen many proposals come and go for this particular piece of land. And this is by far the most palatable, but early on, it was clear that a two-way vehicular access at Alhambra was the key to making this thing successful. And I've been pushing for that through the entire process. Had I been on the dais when they took the vote, I would have taken C.M. Hanson's proposal and said, no, we need to condition this, make this a condition of approval. Before we grant entitlements, we have to ascertain that there will be a two-way vehicular access at Alhambra. It didn't go that way, so we are where we are, and I can tell you that as a council member, I will push relentlessly for the building of that Alhambra tunnel. There is a way to get it done in collaboration with the Capitol Corridor track expansion that might make it a possibility for the city to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen?
No, I would not have voted for the project. The truth is, my organization and myself, as president of East Sacramento Preservation, was involved with this project from the beginning, and we took an educational stance. After looking at all the facts, we came out opposed as proposed to the project and have held that position for more than a year. The failure here, in my opinion, is a failure of the council member to engage with the constituents from the beginning. If we had had a council member that had really pulled the neighborhood together to solve problems, talked about the issues that were negative impacts with the development, we wouldn't be where we were at that council meeting. It's not actually a bad project. It's in the wrong place. There are a myriad of health and safety issues that are negative about the project. I would have voted no, and the kicker to this is, councilmember Hanson's proposal that was put forward to the council is not rock-solid. If that tunnel at Alhambra is built, you and I are going to pay for it.
Thank you. Efren?
Okay. Well, as many know, I came out against it for a variety of reasons. I think some have been said already by the other candidates here. Obviously, the location, as Adam mentioned, it's hard to put a project between railroad tracks, a freeway, and a dump, because on the other side of the 99 there is the city dump. It's not going nowhere. It's always been there. So you have contamination from the dump. You have contamination from the diesel trucks, because that's a 24/7 freeway there. Then you have the possibilities of a light rail accident. Heavens knows, we don't want it. But why are you putting people in danger? We are being told that in the next year or so, possibly, we're going to be having a lot of use of that rail line. All we need is one to fail, one contaminated rail to fail, and that whole area, and you put those people in danger.
Thank you.
There was no reason to do that project.
Thank you very much. Heather, will you please ask the next question first to Cyril?
Certainly.
That's mine, the arena one. Cyril, so yesterday, the final arena deal agreement came out, and so I believe for the next 10 days in Sacramento, that's basically the only thing we're going to be talking about. In 10 days, there'll be a vote at City Council. So my question is, how would you vote, but more importantly, why would you vote? How did you come to that decision? And Cyril, go ahead.
Thank you for that question. You're right, it's a very, very important and hot topic these days. And I think that moving the arena to downtown could potentially be a great catalyst for downtown. I was a Housing and Redevelopment Commissioner for about nine-plus years, and I saw, although we didn't have direct purview over downtown, I did see that it required, in order to get incremental things done downtown, it required a private-sector commitment, but it also required a public-sector commitment. So we all had to work together to revitalize downtown. That being said, I want to be sure, my caveat as far as the arena being built and public money being used, my caveat is that the general fund be made whole, that be made whole, and that general fund revenue grow as a result of this being moved downtown. And if that is, if that can happen in the near term and the long term, then I would be supportive of that proposal.
Thank you. Rosalyn?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with you, Nick. The arena proposal is going to be definitely on the top of the list of questions we're asked in our review of budgets. And I'm actually, I support the arena project, and I haven't had a chance to look at it entirely, but for the most part, there are a few things that I do agree with. And I like how the city council has worked together in making this the best deal possible for our city. They've put a tax that will be getting revenue on hotels. They've ensured that the sale tax, the city will get in whole and not share with the county. They have made a lot of efforts in making sure that the people that need to be employed will be done so in some of our most impoverished neighborhoods. I think they've worked very hard and tirelessly to make this happen. The Kings will be playing at this arena 40 games out of the year. The rest of the time, it's going to be available for conventions and events, and it's going to bring revenue to our city. So whether you like basketball or not, this arena is going to bring the growth that we need. It's going to be revenue, and it's going to be jobs, and it's going to be a burst in our economy. And I think it's a project that will end up being very successful for our city.
Thank you. Adam?
Thank you. I am in favor of the arena. I would have voted, I would vote yes for it, and here's why. Because I believe in a publicly-funded arena, because that means the public gets to decide what's done with it. It's going to be a major, a major share of it's going to be owned by the city, which means if the city elects someone to, elects people to the council that listen to the city, then the people will get to decide what happens with it, such as you could have a Boston Pop-style concert with the Sacramento Philharmonic on the Fourth of July. You could have all sorts of free things, any sort of conventions like Rosalyn was mentioning. And I think this is a good thing for the city. As a city councilman, if elected, I would make sure to, make sure that it's spent to benefit the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
The arena project has great potential for the city in terms of stimulating ancillary growth and development around the arena site itself, but I don't believe that the arena project will actually bring a positive income stream for the city, at least not for many years. I've been critical of the finance plan for the ESC since the beginning, when it was a parking-revenue bond, and now that it's a lease-revenue bond, the interest rate has increased. The term is still 35 years, which I think is unacceptable. So I think that the finance package for this is something that I would vote no on. That being said, the city council is going to move forward with this, and so we need to make this project as successful as possible. One way to do that is to actually fully address the homelessness issue in Sacramento, because it will negatively impact the use of the arena. In my canvassing of District Three, I've found that the bulk of the people that I've talked to are worried about the arena and really wanted to take a vote on it, and I'm sorry that that process was flawed and it didn't happen.
Thank you. Ellen?
Thank you. The history of getting the arena into Sacramento is something that I need to address before I answer this question. I think that the abandoning of the arena in the Natomas area was not a wise decision. The infrastructure was there, and the King should have stayed in that community. The community had developed a lot of businesses that were supported by that arena. That being said, then, measures came up before the people, asking if we wanted to contribute public funding to the arena project, whether we wanted to research it, and twice, the voters of Sacramento said, no, thank you. We were not listened to, and I think that this is a terrible demonstration of a lack of listening to the voters. As far as the funding goes, I think it's sketchy. I am very fearful that this will not provide revitalization to the downtown area. I am very fearful that this will not provide revitalization to the downtown area, and that it is not a good thing. However, the last thing I need to say, as a council member, if it goes through, I would do everything I can to make it work.
Thank you. Efren?
All right. We support the Kings, and we support the arena. When I was in District 1 and ran in 2010, that was one of our biggest topics. What are we going to do with the arena? Are we going to move it? And we fought and fought, many of us, to keep it where it's at. We spent millions of dollars building an Arena Boulevard off-ramp. All the infrastructure's there, the electricity, the sewer lines, everything is there. With very little money, we could build a very beautiful stadium in Natomas, but that wasn't the will of the powers that be. Then they move it to the most contaminated site in the city. Hello? Then somebody gets the bright idea, well, let's move it downtown. Let's keep moving it. It's like a bouncing ball. I have problems too with the financing of it. I don't believe the city or us, when there's so many other things that we need to take care of. Our fire, our libraries, our after-school programs, all those don't have money, but we have money to build an arena. I have a real problem with that.
Thank you. Dean?
I would vote to support, if I was a council member, in 10 days, the new term sheet that's come out. The numbers are similar. There's some little different financing mechanisms that I haven't had the privilege of reading like the press has to some degree. This decision was reached last night. But I feel comfortable with the vote, because I know the arena, having been, I've lived here 30 years, I've seen downtown and the, the whole downtown shopping center down there become an eyesore. It's become an unproductive asset for the city. We need to bring corporations, we need to bring retail, increase retail, we need to bring people back, our residents and people from outside the area, to the downtown. We have an opportunity here with a billionaire coming into town to create a fantastic opportunity, an economic driver for Sacramento, and I think it's going to be a very strong entity to draw and bring jobs to Sacramento.
Thank you. And Heather, are you asking the next question? Please ask it first of Rosalyn.
What should the city's number-one budget priority be?
Well, as a resident, as a parent, as someone who's involved in many organizations that work with our communities and our youth, and speaking with the voters and the residents of District 3, safety is always, always has to be first. And specifically in District 3, we've had a moratorium that's been on a large part of our district. We have a river that runs straight through it, so definitely, that's a top priority for us, in making sure that we're safe. And thank goodness to the efforts and the leadership of Doris Matsui and City Council Member Angelique Ashby. You know, I understand that we are close to having that moratorium lifted. Safety also in regards to crime, you know, especially in South Natomas, and with the moratorium, we have homes that have chain-linked fences around them, and I've heard from a lot of the residents that they're concerned with the crime that's there. And so my work on the Mayor's Gang Division Task Force, my work in the UC Davis Community Advisory Board, in making sure that our most vulnerable children have their needs met and that our youth have jobs available, I'll continue to do, and support our first responders always.
Thank you very much. Adam?
Thank you. My number-one budget priority is going to be public safety. That is, for the budget, that's got to be number one, because the public safety is of prime importance. There are a few other things I'd like to do while on the council, but for the budget, public safety is important. That's our fire depart, our fire departments need to have good response times, our police need to have good response times. We need to have coverage over all of, all of the city and all of our district. I know in South Natomas, where I live, we've had a lot of, a lot of crime in our area, and I'd like to work with neighborhood associations and start building stronger neighborhood watch programs and partner with our communities in addition to shoring up our police and fire. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
So as far as the budget goes, the city manager has said that we really don't have any long-term structural stability in our budget, and that's true. In six years, around 2019, we're looking at a fiscal cliff, and it is pretty daunting when you look at it. Our CalPERS contributions are going to go up. Measure U is set to sunset in March of 2019. At that particular juncture, we could find ourselves facing bankruptcy unless we take measures to prevent it. Part of that will be increased revenue, revenue growth through development. Perhaps the arena will help in that regard by stimulating development in the rail yards in the River District. But we need to set aside a fund and fund it fully as soon as possible to address our looming pension and healthcare liabilities. If we don't do that, we're going to come up short in 2019, and that will not be an acceptable thing for the city to face. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen?
My number-one budget priority is to balance the budget and set aside a rainy day fund. You can't do anything until you have your fiscal house in order. There are so many projects specifically that I'd be interested in funding. I think that something to address about Measure U is that it has worked. We've been a little bit nervous about it, because there has not been proper oversight. I would like to put forth a vote to the people to increase Measure U by one half cent. Nothing would be done unless the people would want it. This would help resource services to the level they were before the recession. Now, you can't tax your way out of success. You also have to make sure that you negotiate and that you have reasonable salaries for the employees in the city. You help clean that up. And you also have a thriving, rich atmosphere for small business to develop in this community.
Thank you. Efren?
Well, obviously, public safety is as high on our, on the list, but I also believe that our youth, we're losing too many of our youth. We hear over and over the homeless. A lot of the people that are homeless are the youth, okay? We're not giving them a chance. We're helping those that already have get richer, and we're not helping the people that really need help. One of my 10-point plans I've put out is actually to return a substation back to Northgate Boulevard. We used to have one, where the police were actually there, and they knew you. You knew them. They actually got out of their cars, and they walked the neighborhood. That's what makes people safe, okay? Just riding around in their little car doesn't make people safe. They need to interact with the neighborhood. They need to talk with their neighbors. We need to know them. I would really emphasize bringing more pop officers. I think that was a program that needs to be emphasized, because those people really get out there and talk to the community and find out what's going on and avoid the problems before they break into your home. So that's what I would suggest.
Thank you very much. Dean?
You know, crime is the number-one service. It's one of the most critical municipal government services that has ever been offered at a city level, and we obviously need to address that strongly. I agree, we need pop officers reinstituted into areas like South Natomas and even in East Sacramento. Crime is rampant right now. The problem really gets back to the budget. It deals with the contracts, or I should say, the lack of contract we have with the Police Officers Union. Will be my first priority if elected, to get that taken care of and get them to accept some reform, so just like the firefighters and other unions have done in the city, to help us deal with this gaping hole we have in our budget. The biggest issue again, and I'll reiterate it again, is to get not just our budget under control, but to get our debt under control. We need to develop funds, we need to stop the requisite spending, so that we can get that budget reserve put aside to start paying down our pension debt and start paying down our other general obligation bond debt. Thank you.
Thank you. Cyril?
Thank you for the question, and I think that the city council over the last few years has wisely focused on the bottom line and cinching its belt and making cuts, some, some painful cuts, to its budget. But now, I think it's time for us to start focusing on the top line and generating more revenue. One interesting fact, figure that, that I've learned is that our general fund, which pays for public safety to improve police response times, keeps our pools open at parks, keeps libraries open so kids have a safe place to do their homework, the largest single contributor to that general fund is $120 million, our share of property tax revenue. If we can find ways to improve our neighborhoods, make them safer, increase property values by just 5%, that's $6 million every year that we can use for public safety, for parks and for libraries.
Thank you. Nick, would you please direct the next question first to Adam? And I'm going to ask that the timer will go to 45-second answers to make sure that we can get in as many questions as possible. Thank you.
I want to talk about South Natomas, and I want to talk about crime and drugs. I had a conversation recently about, you know, large sprawling apartment complexes, little security, drug dealing in neighborhoods, crime in neighborhoods. What's your first step as a council member? What, how do you do to learn more, and how do you engage, and then how do you prioritize what your approach is going to be?
Thank you. Well, my first step would be to engage with the community, talk with people, set, put up a forum for people to talk about crime, talk about crime prevention. The next is to partner with our communities, with our neighbors, and set up city-sponsored neighborhood watch programs, work with the residents, and that's really, I think, the best way to prevent crime, is if you have eyes all over the city watching and communicating with our police officers. Second, what I would do is I would work with our businesses and create more business improvement districts, such as what we have on Mack Road or Del Paso Boulevard, and I think those have really helped those communities as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
So to deal with crime in South Natomas, there's a couple of things, and I agree with Adam that neighborhood watch programs can be very effective. What you really need to do is get neighbors engaged to make their own community safer, to work in collaboration with the police, and the way to do that is to work with the chambers, the neighborhood associations, and even the high school, to create these neighborhood watch groups and to get people involved with their police officers. One great program that we did lose was the Problem-Oriented Policing Program, and it's been very valuable, and it's a terrible thing that we lost it. We need to bring it back. The other, the last thing I'd like to say is that the large landowners in the apartment complexes really need to take responsibility for their complexes and have private security that works in conjunction with the police.
Thank you. Ellen?
I've learned that nothing is going to improve South Natomas more than lifting the moratorium. I was pleasantly surprised to learn that just this Friday, the W.R.D. Act that has been winding its way through committee is actually going to hit the floor for a full vote. After it's passed, and I'm confident it will be, it goes to the president's desk. This is going to change life in Natomas. Economic uplifting and boom is going to improve crime and life in that area, and everyone is poised to do that. The specific question was about crime. Crime will improve when the economy improves. There is a specific program put forth and championed and created by Angelique Ashby called the Youth Advisory Committee. This is an excellent program that draws youth into the solution in South Natomas, and I would promote that.
Thank you. Efren?
Well, one of the things that we have, and thanks, Nick, for bringing that question up, is one of the problems that we have, if people are familiar with South Natomas, is what we call the Four Corners, which is San Juan and Truckso. In the shopping center, there used to be Albertson's, and it's gone through two or three different gyrations, is now it's Food Co., Food Mac, excuse me. Well, we used to have a business there, and we left eight years ago. Why? Because crime was so running rampant there. We formed a group called the Four Corners. I don't know if it's still functioning, but at that time, we got the partners. We had everybody. We had the police, we had the business owners who ran the shopping center, we had the managers of the apartments, we had the school. We all sat down, we had a plan of implementation, and we used to basically take care of business. And that's what we need to do, revitalize that Four Corners group and take care of that business that we did.
Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, I've heard more and more about this as I've been walking precincts in South Natomas, but I will tell you, after talking with the police department, we do need to get more police presence up in South Natomas. We also need fire presence. We do not have paramedics up there. We have got to start working on, maybe thinking about how we do fire stations and police stations a little differently, and think about combined facilities that can operate a paramedic, a police unit, maybe a pop unit working out of there, so that we can get the real service we need into the residents. I will also reinstitute a task force of both the city and community members. We will have monthly meetings, and we will address those issues as they continue to develop, because it is never a constant thing. It is a static thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Cyril?
Thank you for the question, and while I respect the, my fellow candidates' answers in the, in the long-term solutions that some of them have presented, this is an urgent problem that requires an immediate solution. And if I'm elected, what I'll do is I will immediately begin working on improving police response times, because I've, I've talked to a number of victims of crime, not just in South Natomas, but in East Sacramento and River Park recently, and if you're the victim of a crime, whether it's a violent crime or a home invasion, at that instant, the difference between someone arriving 30 seconds earlier or 30 seconds later can be the difference between a very tragic outcome or a more palatable outcome. So I'll improve police response times. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rosalyn?
Thank you. I have experience working in some of our toughest neighborhoods. In college, I founded a nonprofit that worked with the Cleveland Elementary Massacre. I was educated here through Sacramento, the Gangs Prevention Task Force with Condi Rice and the Advancement Project. And I've, as I've walked, I've spoken to voters, and Gardenland in particular, expressed their happiness with the police and how the issues of gangs have been addressed there. It's important for us to be able to not just come in with solutions and how to stop the crime, but also work in prevention, and that's where my experience in working with nonprofits, a group that I work with during the summer in Del Paso Heights, will come into effect, and making sure that the neighborhood is educated with programs like Next Door, that's going to help keep us connected, and 3-1-1, that's going to help us be able to report problems. So a lot of it's a combination of working with our fellow police department and working on prevention and addressing the concerns that we have currently.
Thank you. Heather, I feel please direct the next question first to Jeff.
Okay. All right, Jeff. Small business owners have complained about all the red tape, about how difficult it is to open a small business in Sacramento, to sustain that small business, and how it is to interact with the city. If elected, what would you do to ease relations between small businesses and the city and make it easier for them?
Yeah, thanks for the question. As a small businessman, I can tell you, I deal with this on a daily basis. The fees and regulations permits that are proposed by the city are, in fact, somewhat onerous for small business. Most small businesses are largely undercapitalized, and these kinds of fees are very hard on certainly startups. So I would like to shift the budget a little bit so that we require less revenue from fees and more from taxation later on because of development. I think that's really the key to supporting small business in Sacramento, to ease the regulations, to lower the fees, and we'll find that will, our small business community will thrive under those conditions.
Thank you. Ellen?
It's a sad fact that most small businesses fail within the first three years. I'd like to investigate giving tax relief to people who are starting businesses. I would also like to promote businesses more using technology. The city can be an advocate and bring forward new ideas and new businesses and spread the word more. I think this would help a great deal. The other thing is, is I would like to continue any sponsoring workshops that the city has to educate people how to start a small business, so people can get in that arena and be successful, particularly youth. That is the future, the future of small business, and I think that if we have the advocate of youth, we have the advocacy in the future.
Thank you. Efren?
Yes. There was a program a while back, they were called Bee Hives, and these Bee Hives basically brought community people together to educate themselves on what they needed to do to participate in the city and how to get credits and how to start businesses. I think we need to return back to those type of workshops, interact with the community. I think best, the associations, the community associations, the Chamber of Commerce's need to step up and, and participate in this and help organize these Bee Hives. Also, I believe that we, maybe we need to sit down and look at best practices of other cities and see what fees and things they're charging. Maybe we need to tweak ours a little Maybe we need to tweak ours a little bit to make ours more competitive. I have heard that repeatedly, that we are not a very business-friendly city. Well, maybe we need to address that in a realistic way.
Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, my family's owned a corporation that does small business, sometimes a kind of a medium-sized business. We had up to forty employees at one point in time. I, I will tell you, our, our biggest concern has always been taxes, sales tax increases. We sell products, we get, we, we pay sales tax on it. People that buy our products have to pay sales tax. We have got to make, get away from the taxing concept and make ourselves competitive with other areas. We're in the print business, print graphics business, and oftentimes we have to utilize vendors outside of the city, because we're getting a more favorable rate for our clients. Businesses adapt very quickly to, to things, but we need to be given some breaks. We can't be harassed on parking, you know, by parking officials trying to get parking revenue. We need to make it a friendly place for business. That will be my goal, to make Sacramento a very business-friendly place.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, and I've been engaged with small businesses since I was a kid. My first job at fifteen was making cheese steaks in the food court at Arden Fair Mall, paid minimum wage, and today I talk to a lot of the great small business owners in the district, throughout the district, and I'll tell you, I bet if you asked all of them what they would like to see more of, is they'd like to see more customers, they'd like to see more revenue. Let's create high-paying jobs and put more money, more disposable income in the pockets of working-class families, and let them spend that money locally. It'll be great for those families that have new opportunities, and it'll be great for the businesses that will benefit from that.
Thank you. Rosalyn?
Thank you. Given the enormous size and the value that small businesses provide to our economy, it is of the utmost importance that they are supported, and it might mean that we give them tax incentives, it might mean that we streamline the process, and it's important that they have a voice and a seat at the table. Small businesses are definitely the backbone of our economy here. The majority of them are produced by them, and so it's important that they give the support and then we provide a community that gives them the opportunities to be economically successful.
Thank you. And Adam?
Well, as I've said earlier, small business and making Sacramento a small-business-friendly city is going to be my top priority if elected to the city council. I want to do things such as actually talk with small businesses, have a forum, have, have a convention even with all the chambers, all the chambers represented, have other small businesses that aren't part of a small chamber invited to it. Talk with them, see what is the city doing that's hurting them, what can the city do to help them. One of the things specifically that I was looking at that I'd like to change is getting rid of some of these nanny ordinances, such as the, the sandwich board ordinance, which is spottily enforced, and I'd like to get rid of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our very last question, Nick, would you please address it first to Ellen?
Sure. I'd like to talk about River District, Township Nine, Richards Boulevard, American River Parkway. This is an area of the city that's often overlooked. On one hand, you have a lot of emerging development, a lot of new opportunity for, for new development and new businesses. On the other hand, you have homelessness services and homelessness issues, camping on the parkway, all sorts of panhandling, et cetera. I ride my bike through the American River Parkway all the time, and I see issues that have been addressed in Marcos Breton's columns in the B. Anyways, my question for you is, how do you sort of parachute in to this area, learn more about what's going on, and, and what are your sort of priorities as a council member, so that you can nurture development, but at the same time preserve homelessness services?
It's a really interesting question. It's the smallest part of this district, but in some ways it's the most important. I have reached out to many people in the River District, and of course, homelessness and illegal camping, and there is a difference between the two, is the biggest problem. I am proposing, if I am lucky enough to be elected as councilwoman, to hold a summit with all the stakeholders. Nobody knows better on how to solve the homeless problem than the people who work in that community every day. The River District is exciting because of the new building that's going in, but that is the problem that has to be solved, is homelessness, and there's no magic wand and there's, there's no quick fix. You have to ask and bring together the people actually are in the trenches and know what to do to help people, and these are people.
Thank you. Efren?
Well, obviously, I would engage loas and fishes. They have a good history of working that area. They know that area very, very familiar. Also, there is a problem there, as you know, with the homeless issues, but again, it's a matter of doing something with them, employing them. I am in supportive of SafeGround. I believe we need to move on that, and we need to quit talking about it and keep playing ping pong with it. We need to get it done. The money's there, the will is there, the people want to get it done, so I think we need to move on it. So that would be my one priority there. Also, obviously, we need to sit down with the stakeholders. What do we want there? We have an opportunity to build a beautiful site right next to the river, one of the best things that we have in Sacramento. We need to do it right. So I would sit down also with all the stakeholders and see what we can do to make that project really work nice.
Thank you. Dean?
You know, my whole mantra is not just creating development or creating programs, it's creating quality development. We're in a...